And now we are at sixty, but I think Chris you can call the meeting to order or Mark, you can call the meeting.
All right, I'll call the meeting to order and I want to welcome everybody and thank everyone for joining this evening. This evening, we have Sarah Abshire with Tillamook County Community Development joining us to provide an update on ordinance eighty-four, which is related to STRs. So welcome, Sarah, and thanks for being here with us. Appreciate this. It is really the focus of the agenda for tonight. We're gonna go through our our normal routine and one of them is approving the minutes. But before we get started, I just want to make a comment. It's related to the August twelfth meeting. At that meeting, I made a mistake, which was asking bylaws candidates if they owned an STR. In my opinion, the question really had no bearing on a person's ability or other qualifications for serving on a bylaws committee. This was my fault. Use poor judgment in the instance, and I'll definitely need to be more attentive going forward. So with that, conflict of interest question of the officers. Take a look at that here. So if any officer votes or proposes a position on a proposition in which the officer has a direct indirect special or financial interest, that officer is obligated to disclose the existence of such interest to the membership before voting or proposing a position. So I have no conflicts this evening. Jeff?
No conflicts.
Chris?
No conflicts.
Okay, and Alex?
No conflicts.
Okay, thank you. Approval of the minutes, Jeff?
Okay, so just, just in case anyone's wondering, the minutes, the minute minutes for August seventh and for August twelfth, the links are available in the chat. They were in the available in the last email that went out. They're available on the website. I doubt anyone wants to go look at them right now, but chance really quick. And so I move that we approve the meeting minutes for August seventh and August twelfth. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, and gonna put up poll. Currently at forty-one of sixty-two votes. And let's see, forty-five. Forty-six. Going to close soon because I assume some people are not paying attention and not going to vote. We've been at forty-six for a little while. I'm gonna go ahead and, and the poll, a forty-seven. And the poll. And it was forty-seven out of forty-seven in favor for both motions, for both, both. So just that really quick.
Okay.
And thank you all.
Okay, thanks, Jeff. Okay. Onto the, the main agenda item for the evening is Sarah's here has kindly agreed to be here this evening to give us an update on ordinance eighty-four, which was approved by the Board of County Commissioners mid-August, I believe. And so Sarah, I don't, do you have a you just have a presentation? You're gonna do some slides and things? Is that right or?
So, thank you, Mark. Hello, everyone. I do not have a formal presentation together, but I do have some things to share. So Jeff, yeah, I'm gonna go ahead and use my share screen function if that's okay. Okay. So you ready, Mark?
Yep, ready to go.
Okay, great. Good evening, everyone. It's nice to see you again. For the record, my name is Sarah Abshire. I'm the Director of the Tillamook County Department of Community Development. And I'm here this evening to share with you short-term rental program updates. Mark, how much time do I have to walk through updates? I want to leave time for questions.
So we've allocated Sarah fifty minutes for this agenda item. And then, then just to let you know, after that, we adjourned. So, you know, it'd be great to, to, after you do some walking us through some stuff to allow a little bit of time for questions, but at seven oh nine, I'd say around eightish and a little after we should adjourn, so.
Okay, great. Thank you. At first I thought you said fifteen minutes. Thank you so much. And I'll just apologize now. I've had computer issues all day today. If I cut out, if you don't hear me, please stop me and let me know. So that I can, I can repeat what I said. Okay, so yes, as Mark had mentioned, the Board of County Commissioners took action on July nineteenth to adopt the amendments to ordinance eighty-four that regulates short-term rentals in unincorporated Tillamook County. This action was followed by an additional action to establish licensing fees. And then following that also to establish limitations or caps on the number of licenses that can be held or issued in each of the twenty-one sub-areas of unincorporated Tillamook County. The sub-areas include unincorporated communities such as Nescuin that are defined by your community boundaries. And then also with that, all of those properties located within urban growth boundaries of each of our seven incorporated cities. So I'm gonna just take a moment to walk everyone through the website. Just in case you want to know where documents are, you'd like to go back and read them in depth later for yourself, or you're just curious where you can find them moving forward. So I'm gonna go ahead and do a share screen here real quick. And I may not be able to see you, so please, Jeff or Mark, please interrupt me if, if you need to ask me something. Okay, great. So can you see the county homepage?
Yes.
All right, very good. Okay, so this is the Tillamook County homepage. Also, just on a quick note, the Commissioners are taking applications and invite candidates to fill the remainder Commissioner Yamamoto's term. If you hadn't heard, he is retiring towards the end of this year. Just wanna put a quick plug in for that. All right, so under government, if you go to departments to community development. And then there's a few things on the homepage. So we have all of our phone numbers, including the non-emergency complaint hotline. So this is that hotline that has been talked about for the last eighteen months through the program updates. That number is there. It is available twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. And if you have any concerns or complaints about short-term rental activity, this is the number to call. If it is a life-threatening emergency or other type of dangerous or unsafe situation, please call nine-one-one. I have been talking to the sheriff about that, and he is also prepared to receive those calls through nine-one-one dispatch when they rise to the appropriate level of the sheriff's office getting involved. For those of you that have short-term rentals and you are either preparing for an inspection as part of your three-year reinspection requirement that continues to exist. That was something that was adopted previously in ordinance eighty-four, or if you are an applicant who is preparing to submit a new STR license application, that is the inspection line, and then, of course, the program inquiry line. Also, on the homepage, so we did go ahead and build that online registry. I will apologize, it shows up, the font is pretty small. You're going to need to zoom in, and it might take a moment to upload. Oh, nope, it gave me the other one. Excuse me, I must have clicked the wrong button. So this is on the, on the homepage, and then also later on the short-term rental page. This is a guide sheet for submittal of a new STR license application. It outlines the process, what's required to be submitted with a new application, what you can expect in the process, and of course, our contact information. Okay. So the online registry, oh, no, I did not click that. Oh, we'll have to fix that. So I'm gonna go ahead and show you where the online registry also is. So if you go over to the left-hand side of the page and you click down on the short-term lot rental lodging tab, and please note, this is not the short-term rental advisory committee page. The advisory committee has finished their work. For now, they will be reactivated when called to action by the Board of County Commissioners. So you're going to want to go to the actual, on this column, to the lodging and short-term rental page. So again, numbers are here. Let's try this registry. We did just recently update it. Okay. You're going to have to zoom in. I apologize for the small font. And this is a pretty hefty registry. What you will see in this registry is the number of the short-term rental license. Some of the license numbers look different. It depends on the year they were issued. You can tell by the second column, the year that the license was initially issued. So twenty-ten, you have twenty-twelve, twenty-fifteen, twenty-eighteen, etc. The second column over is the sub-area. So again, of those twenty-one sub-areas defined, Nescuin is further on the list. I don't want to make anybody sick by scrolling through this really fast. You will see then the address of the rental property. You will see the manager, their phone number, their email, their occupancy, their parking, and you will also see their renewal anniversary month. So as you are aware, with ordinance eighty-four, there is a payment extension to extend that license through the anniversary month. So you're not going to see a specific date. You will see the anniversary month of which they are obligated to renew their license in during that time. Um, so then moving down further on the short-term rental page, there are the sub-area maps. So those are the maps that include Nescuin with the defined boundaries. You have the order establishing fees for new license applications, alterations, renewals, etc. And then the order establishing the limits or the caps in each community. With that, there is the license requirement page. So this breaks down all of the various documents. If it is an alteration of an existing license, this could be if someone wants to change their maximum occupancy, which we do see on occasion, sometimes to lower, sometime to increase, sometimes to increase. There's the application for a new license. Also on here is an inspection preparation checklist. And so this also reflects some of the updates in ordinance eighty-four amendment two. It breaks down exterior and interior requirements to prepare for an inspection. This is also helpful for neighbors or just members of the community that may be interested to better understand in a summarized format, what is required for the inspection. So this is on that page as well. And then the supporting documents, so down here is a copy of the adopted ordinance eighty-four amendment two. What I would like to go back to on this page is the limits. So let's talk about that first, and then we'll get into the more of the updates of what is happening. So Nescuin did have some qualified waitlist recipients. As you are aware, the board asked for an opportunity to allow property owners who were under construction when the pause was implemented to have an opportunity to get their letters of interest into apply for a new license, and then subsequently, on August second, they were invited to apply. For those of you in Nescuin that were waitlist recipients, meaning you qualified in that your home was under construction with a valid building permit on or be on or before July first, twenty-twenty-two, and also that you had a certificate of occupancy as of, I believe it was June. It was, it was the date in June twenty-twenty-three. I believe it was the twenty-third. I'd have to go back. That order is also on the website. We went through building permit records, sent notification to all owners that qualified based on what we could see in our records. We did receive seventeen requests to apply. Fourteen of those seventeen requests met the two criteria to apply for a new STR license. And then with that, in this order, so this is board order twenty-three fifty-four. You can see here, these are the sub-areas, the twenty-one sub-areas that are also called out in ordinance eighty-four amendment two. It talks about, and excuse me, it was June twenty-first. It talks about the establishment of caps in the sub-areas. I'm gonna go ahead and scroll down. I'm gonna increase my screen. So what the board, the action that they took on that, in that hearing on August second, when caps were established for each of the sub-areas, was they looked at what the percentage was of properties that had licenses as of June twenty-twenty-three, July twenty-twenty-three. So with the qualified waitlist recipients that totaled a hundred and eighty licenses for the community. In lifting the pause, which the pause ends August thirty-first, where new applications for new STR licenses can be submitted to the department starting September first, the board increased the cap percentage in Nescuin to lift the pause with a percentage of twenty-one percent not to exceed a hundred and ninety-one licenses for the community of Nescuin. So what that means when the pause lifts and new applications can be received starting September first, there are eleven open licenses for new applications. And I'm gonna come back and talk about that again in just a little bit. But so the cap that has been established for the community of Nescuin is now twenty-one percent not to exceed a hundred and ninety-one licenses for the properties within your community boundary. The board can change these percentages. It, it will require an update to this board order. But this order establishing caps is in addition to ordinance eighty-four amendment two. If you recall, the ordinance eighty-four amendment two states that the county will establish caps for those twenty-one sub-areas. This is the order that actually gives you the numbers. And the reason why it's a percentage along with a not-to-exceed number is because as development occurs and growth continues to occur in your community, it will change the percentage of the, the number of, of the caps, which means it can also impact the number of licenses that can be issued. So the board fully expects to either on an annually or a biannual basis come back and reevaluate what the actual percentage is then of licensed properties in each of the sub-areas and the community of Nescuin included. Ordinance eighty-four also establishes limitations and growth management tools for properties outside of the community boundary. And I think especially in Nescuin, that's important because your community boundary that defines the community, the boundary of the community does not extend as far out as the boundary for your CAC membership, right? You include properties up Slab Creek Road and elsewhere that are very much a part of your community, but those properties are not located specifically within the community boundary for Nescuin. And so for those properties, what has been implemented as a growth management tool through ordinance eighty-four amendment two is a distance and density limitation. So essentially, it will not allow adjacent properties or contiguous properties to both hold an STR license at the same time. Where that already exists and where that, where we have places, either I'm thinking Horizon View Hills or even potentially up Slab Creek Road, where if you already have two properties that are contiguous that are licensed, these new provisions do not require either one of those properties to give up their license. I want to be clear on saying that. What it means, though, is moving forward, another property adjacent to those two already licensed properties would not be able to apply for a license or receive a license until that the new property was no longer contiguous to already licensed properties. So it adds space and distance in between each of the licensed properties, so they are not clustered together. And that only applies, that only applies outside of the community boundary. With properties within the community boundary, it's a flat percentage. They can be next to each other. They can be far apart. There's no distance and density, only a number of license limitation. Um, so that is the board order for establishing limits. The fees, the fees did go up for new licenses. The fee went up fifty dollars. The fee also went up fifty dollars for renewal from what the existing costs were. There is a new fee. It is for an alteration of an existing license. If we are required to update a mailing, remail a certificate, it takes staff time to go in, update records, do that administrative work. We are now charging a fee for that. Let's see. So I'm in the onsite wastewater treatment section. So this is the updates primarily in reflection of what has been updated on the county website. Again, you do not want to go to the short-term rental advisory committee page. The committee work is done for now until they are called to action again by the board. You will want to go to the lodging slash short-term rental tab, which is the fourth tab down. It's right underneath sanitation. So I'm gonna go ahead and stop sharing my screen. Okay. So let's talk about then some of the updates and changes to ordinance eighty-four, which are now reflected in amendment two. There were some changes to the parking requirements. Parking previously was one parking space per sleeping area plus one additional parking space. Up to two on-street parking spaces were also allowed. There were no dimensional requirements, no parking maximums, and no requirement for a formal on-street parking authorization. This being said, there were times over the course of the past few years when I have been administrator of this program that I have consulted with Public Works and the local fire chief. If I did see a parking plan that concerned me to the extent that parking on the street would not allow for passage of emergency vehicles. The modifications, the parking has been modified to now require one space per bedroom. So the plus-one parking requirement was removed. Um, with that, even if a property qualifies as an estate home, which is a property that has five or more bedrooms, parking is now capped at a maximum of six per rental for overnight. So actually, if you have seven or eight bedrooms, there is actually some relief to parking because it gives a maximum allowance now of only six cars. With that, there is now a requirement for dimensional standards. So each parking space that is off-street is required to have each parking space at eight feet by sixteen feet. There is also an on-street parking dimension established at eight feet by twenty feet or a dimension that is authorized by the Tillamook County Public Works Director, which means that that dimension could be less. The biggest concern of the Public Works Director was the width, making sure again that on-street parking does not impede passage of emergency vehicles, but also that twenty-foot length is largely for parallel parking so that vehicles can maneuver in and out of those parking spaces. There's also a provision that if a road approach or your driveway is altered as to how it connects to the street in order to accommodate parking, you may need additional review by Public Works, which is a standard requirement for alterations of driveways if you are relocating your approach onto a road anyway. Both in ordinance eighty-four amendment one and ordinance eighty-four amendment two, there is an allowance where RVs and boat trailers can use those parking spaces if not utilized by a vehicle visiting, of folks visiting the property. There's also, yes.
Can I just ask you? So we've, we've got a question here. Do you want me to wait? Or, I mean, it's, it is related to parking, so.
Sure. Well, that's it. I have two more details on parking, and then, yeah, let's go ahead and let's get to those questions. Thank you, Mark. So the other thing is that ordinance eighty-four amendment one also did not specify maintenance of parking areas. We, what we did was we ended up also adding in a, a specification that parking spaces need to be in, on an all-weather travel surface. That does not mean asphalt. It can mean gravel. It can mean concrete. What it isn't is mud. So just clarifying again, making that clarification of, of making sure that those areas, parking areas are maintained. One of the important details moving forward, and we'll talk about a compliance timeline and schedule. But for those of you who have licenses already for use of your home as a short-term rental, as you are going through your renewal and your reinspection process now, if you are within that three-year timeframe, the new parking requirements, and I'm talking specifically about the dimensional requirements, do not go into effect for existing licensed properties until your renewals after January first, twenty-twenty-four. So if you are utilizing on-street parking, if you are not sure if your parking spaces meet those dimensional requirements, please feel free to reach out to us. We are happy to pull the parking plan that was initially approved for your license, walk you through that. You know, the big thing is, please make sure those parking spaces are available and that they meet those dimensional requirements or that you start working on those on-street authorizations where required, so that when we get to your renewal, starting January first, twenty-twenty-four, we can get through that process as quickly and as easily as possible. What we are seeing today as we continue to do those three-year re-inspections is that the parking plans that were approved with the initial license don't always accurately reflect what we are now seeing on the ground. So those three-year re-inspections, I, I think the classic example is inspector goes out to do the three-year reinspection. Site plan says we have two parking spaces in the garage. Inspector gets to the site. There's no parking in the garage because there's a couch, there's a foosball table, there's a hockey table, there's kayaks and bikes and all that fun stuff. The parking re- The parking requirements that were um. Identified when the license was first issued still apply. So as we're doing our re-inspections. If you said you had parking in the garage, which was what helped qualify your maximum occupancy and your parking. Five years ago when your license was issued, please make sure those spaces are still available. Because that will, as we continue to do those three-year re-inspections, that will impact. Um the results of your inspection. If we go out there and we can't verify that you have the parking that you initially said you did. So just want to put that out there too. Mark, yeah, what do we have for? What do we have for parking questions?
So let's see. Uh first question. So if guests have visitors for the day. Can there be more since it is temporary?
Yes. Yes, they can. Um let me find that. So there is a provision. So there's two types of dwellings that are defined. As they determine maximum occupancy moving forward. There's dwellings that have. Four or less bedrooms. And then a new definition is for estate homes, which have five or more bedrooms. And in each of these. Um it states that. The maximum daytime occupancy for any short-term rental. Shall be limited to the nighttime maximum occupancy. Plus six additional people. So if you have um. So if your maximum occupancy. Say you have a little tiny cottage, your maximum occupancy is six people. During the day, you can have an additional six people there. Um and then with that, there are some provisions for some extra parking during that daytime. Um there was a long conversation. About daytime use and especially parking. Within public right-of-way. So so there is a person limit, but then also with that, it is the the parking. Requirements and maximum occupancy largely fall to. Use of the dwelling as a rental for overnight, but there are provisions for some extra parking. And also again, those additional guests during daytime hours, which would be from seven AM to ten PM.
Thanks, Sarah. Uh second question, it says, so the limit is six vehicles per rental, per rental property. What uh? What's the action to take if the limit is exceeded?
Thank you. That's a great question. And so. When we talk about rental property, just to make a clarification. What we're talking about is the single dwelling unit on that rental property. So if it's a duplex or a triplex um that has already been licensed. Um or something like the condos. Those parking requirements apply to each one of those units. Does that make sense? So. So the condos, each of those units have to meet their own parking requirements. It's not just the property. It's it's if there's multiple units, it's per unit. Okay. Um. Okay, so can you repeat the second half of the question, please?
Yeah, uh so it was uh. So the limit is six vehicles per rental property. What is the action to take if the if that limit is exceeded?
So that would be a violation of ordinance eighty-four amendment two. So you can call the hotline. Report it. There's a way to upload photos. You don't want to make sure that you have that photographic evidence. Um as we've discussed before, it is very difficult to take code enforcement action if there is not adequate burden of proof. So so please call the hotline. They will notify the contact person. Uh for that rental, that person has thirty minutes to respond. And then also, um please upload any photographs or videos. I will get that evidence. Uh brought with my report from the company who does our hotline work for us.
I have a condo in which I don't own a parking space, only one of fifty-three of a of a parking lot. I guess the question is, how can you force non- S T O S T R owners? Of the lot to meet your requirements?
So the requirements only apply to licensed properties.
Okay, okay. Uh do the parking requirements require all the parking spots to be on the property?
Hmm, it's a good question. So provided that authorization can be given for on-street parking. Each rental could have up to two on-street parking spaces. The rest of the required parking has to be on the property.
Besides parking availability, what criteria apply to whether? To whether to grant additional S T R spaces? Do you consider impacts? On utility capacity? Percentages seem to be very dramatically, very dramatically from one community to another.
There are no requirements at this time to provide updated water sewer letters. The transportation review is limited to on-street parking for transportation systems.
Let's see. Let's see. Couple more here. Uh how do you know if the parking issue is not the, is not the owner or their guests?
So um when we follow up with the phone call to the manager, the contact person to. Talk to them about a potential violation. If we are told that it was the owner that was there for the weekend. It's not a violation. And obviously I'd have to have some sort of, you know, proof or evidence that I would take to county council to verify that. But again, the the rules governing use of a property as a short-term rental. Apply when the property is being used as a short-term rental.
Uh let's see, one more here. It looks like. If a single-family home has two bedrooms. Are they allowed only two parking spaces? Or can they have six?
The minimum would be two and the maximum would be six.
Okay.
Okay, great questions. Any more?
For right now, Sarah.
Okay. All right, so let's go ahead and move on to maximum occupancy. So uh ordinance eighty-four amendment one. Was two people per sleeping area plus two. Many of you recall, we had some pretty um robust discussions about. Changing. That occupancy formula from sleeping areas to bedrooms. With that then. Further defining what a bedroom is. And the updates to that included a minimum of seventy square feet floor area. Horizontally, not vertically horizontally. So basically. A bedroom has to be. At least seven feet by ten feet or some sort of dimension that meets that minimum seventy square feet. The egress requirements, all of that has remained the same. Um the other change in addition to the seventy-square-foot. Horizontal. Dimensional requirement. Was um. That it has to have a closet or some sort of clothing storage feature, whether it's a rack from Ikea. You have some built-ins um. But that is what defines a bedroom. So. Occupancy calculations will be shifting as of January first, twenty twenty-four. And for new licenses issued now. We will no longer use sleeping area. We will use bedrooms as defined in ordinance eighty-four amendment two. But the calculation of two people. Which would be now per bedroom plus two remains the same. So everybody, the plus two has stayed. In addition to the plus two. Is an allowance to also host. Up to three children under the age of twelve. And to be clear, the three children under the age of twelve does not automatically get folded into the maximum occupancy. You're not going to see those three kids in your maximum occupancy allowance that's on your certificate and license. What you, what you can do though, for those of you who've been asking, because I've gotten this question a lot. Your maximum occupancy will remain two per bedroom plus two. But you can put a caveat somewhere in your listing, your advertisement that states. Uh can also accommodate up to three children under the age of twelve. So um. Part of that was folded into the formula. Recognizing that with sleeping areas, sometimes a den or a loft. May now be. Removed from that formula. But oftentimes, uh the community and committee feedback we heard was that those often, you know, where kids are anyway. And the the county, the commissioners. Supported that up to three kids under the age of twelve. Um because of the testimony and the desire to promote. Family lodging, a family atmosphere in a place where a family can come vacation at the coast. So. Two people per bedroom plus two. Now you also get the three free kids under the age of twelve. They just have to be under twelve. So um. That is, that is probably the biggest change with that. Um with the estate home definition. Um it does provide an overall maximum occupancy limit. To an estate home. So once you get up to a certain number. Even though you may have twenty bedrooms in your home, that estate uh home definition is going to cap occupancy. But you also get the three kids.
Yeah, yeah, just a two or three questions here, maybe, maybe one more coming in, Sarah. So. Uh re- regarding this. So if a home has seven bedrooms, the allowance is fourteen plus two. Is that correct?
So the um so in an estate home, which is five or more bedrooms.
Yeah.
You're allowed a maximum nighttime occupancy of up to fourteen. So how many bedrooms did you say were in the question?
The question is seven.
Seven, okay. So two people per bedroom. Plus two. Would put them at sixteen, if I'm doing my math right, at seven forty-five at night.
That's.
But. The is, the estate home limitation. Would allow maximum occupancy of up to fourteen.
Okay.
But then you also get the three kids under the age of twelve that are in addition to that occupancy limit.
Okay. All right, uh another question. Does the clothing storage requirement? Mean uh hanging rod for clothes? Or do drawers and shelves for folded clothes work?
There's a lot of um examples for what a clothing storage unit could mean. And the intent of that is to be flexible. So if it is a place to store clothes. Hanging or folding. That can be accepted. What wouldn't be accepted is one of those like cardboard moving boxes with the rod in it that we all use when we're. Moving somewhere. It it has to be some sort of functioning. Clothing storage unit, whether it's built-in drawers. You know, again, one of those contraptions from Ikea or a standard closet. And there's no minimum dimensional requirements to that. Just need to be able to pass a straight face test of. This is where guests can put their clothes.
Okay, thanks. How will max occupant occupancy be changed? For currently permitted. S T Rs if all the bedrooms. In a cottage are smaller than the new. Seven-foot minimum in one horizontal direction.
So it's seventy square feet. So I use the seven by ten as the example because that's simple math. So the the area itself horizontally. Which means not vertically, but the room itself has to have an area, a horizontal area of seventy square feet. So if the bedrooms cannot meet that dimension. Then they would not continue as of January first, twenty twenty-four. They would not continue to be, they would not meet that definition of a bedroom. They would not be calculated in occupancy. But it's it's seventy square feet.
Right, okay. Uh next question, uh what does a residence resident do? With the complaint procedure? If he or she is dealing with excess autos? Or excess noise, et cetera? And has no knowledge about taking pictures and uploading these. To the people answering the complaint. Not not everyone living here may have computer knowledge such as this. It's a good question.
Sure. So my recommendation would be to write down the S T R hotline. Number. Put it on your fridge. Put it in your phone. Um. The thing. So. The the thing with enforcement, which I know has been a big focus of conversation throughout this entire process and the inception of the program. It is very difficult. For the department to take code enforcement action or to follow up. With a code enforced complaint or complaint. If there is not evidence. To prove that the that that issue occurred. That that situation occurred. And so, you know, um. If it's a noise complaint during quiet hours, so one of the changes with noise. Because quiet hours have always been identified from seven PM to seven AM. The change with ordinance eighty-four amendment two is that the clarification of if it is audible from the property line. And that is the big thing. That was not there before. It was very hard to enforce a noise complaint without the specificity. Of where the noise could be heard. And how to get me evidence. That 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 violation occurred. Um. So if. If there, if there is not the ability to upload. Any evidence of that noise violation, my recommendation would be to still call the hotline. Because ultimately, the contact person is required to respond in thirty minutes. Which is actually a change. It increased from twenty minutes response time that was in ordinance eighty-four amendment one. So the contact person ultimately, whether or not the department determines there's a violation. The contact person is required to respond to that complaint within thirty minutes. And then if it is not resolved and the concerned person calls back. That then they need to go to the site. With with within another thirty-minute timeframe to help resolve the issue. If it's a party, you have a manager or a property owner trying to do the right thing. Get the situation addressed and resolved and it's not happening. Call nine-one-one. It will go in the nine-one-one log for a deputy and I will get a copy of that as well.
Okay. I see uh. I see. Is it Heather Pearson? Has her hand up? Is there a question? Heather?
It was that a mistaken hand raise?
Maybe.
Maybe. Kitchen family. You're muted, but 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 you can wave at us if you if you don't need to to ask any questions. Okay, no, no questions and and uh if you can figure out how to take your hand down, that'd be great.
Okay. I'm trying to be better about watching the hands, so. Okay, so here's a question, Sarah. Um. It says, please ask Sarah to clarify when the new requirements take effect. We have heard January one, twenty twenty-four. But that isn't listed anywhere on the county website. We've asked for clarification uh. Uh. From Sarah and Dustin, but haven't received any answer. We renewed our permit in June before the new ordinance was approved. And have an inspection soon, so.
Okay, great. Thank you for asking that. So. There's. So the. Everything starts going to affect except the use it or lose it. Clause on January first, twenty twenty-four at the time of. Renewal, license renewal and three-year re-inspection. So quickly, the use it or lose it for those uh in the community that have a license but are not renting. Or renting very little. The thirty-night requirement within your calendar. Year. Or excuse me, within your anniversary. Or excuse me, within your anniversary year, that actually goes into effect January one, twenty twenty-five. And that's when that will start being looked at with those subsequent renewals following that date. So starting January first, twenty twenty-four, and this is only for. In properties that already have a license. Any new license applications that come in moving forward are subject to all of. The provisions outlined in ordinance eighty-four amendment two. Um, there's no going back and applying the old. Or less clear regulations. So starting January twenty-first, excuse me, January first, twenty twenty-four. At the time of renewal. The parking requirements go into effect. Maximum occupancy requirements go into effect. The application of an estate home goes into effect. Um, the whole harmless agreement goes into effect. And the bedroom openings, which. Have not changed, but there has been some minor clarification, including a relief clause. For the building official to use as a determination. For older homes with windows to where they can still meet the intent of those ingress egress requirements. The interior mandatory postings go into effect, January first, twenty twenty-four at the time of your renewal. As well as the exterior signage requirements. So I do have um, a schedule that I will be posting online because I know there's a lot of folks that are asking about that. Um. What then would go in effect starting January one, twenty twenty-four? For the three year inspections, which largely does not apply to the Nescuin community. Would be those additional onsite sanitation evaluations. If, if that is required because your property is only served by a full onsite sanitation system. Um, the fire and life safety checklist is required now. For renewals and will continue to be required on an annual basis. That's the checklist for the um, property owner or the contact person to sign. That verifies that smoke detectors, carbon monoxide detectors, your G F I outlets. All of those fire and life safety elements continue to be in good working order. I have been going out on short term rental inspections with staff. The past few weeks and have been very concerned at the number of fire of, of smoke detectors. Um, and G F I outlets that are not working. They are tested. And so I would please ask everyone who has a licensed property. Please maintain your batteries. Please maintain those outlets. That's a big deal. We don't want to suspend licenses until you. Go get new batteries. Please have them working and have them tested before we get there. And please check them annually.
Another question here, Sarah, please define a response. Um. I think this. Might be to a complaint, uh, I E. Physical presence, phone call, et cetera.
Mm-hmm. So there are two types of responses. The standard response for the contact person, the obligation is, is when you receive. Uh, notification that there's been a complaint. Of a rental property that you were responsible for. Um, that you respond to address the complaint within a thirty minute timeline. And for those who call. The hotline, there is an option to get a callback feature to confirm. That the uh, contact person. Was notified. If the issue persists. And the concerned citizen. Calls the hotline. Because let's say after an hour. The, the issue has not been resolved. Then upon that notification of the contact person, there needs to be someone onsite within thirty minutes. To help address the issue.
Okay, and kind of maybe a follow up. What's the consequence to an S T R owner or man- management for inaction or delayed action? In response to a hot, hotline complaint?
So it is a violation. Um. And then depending on the nature of the violation and the number of times this violation has occurred. It may be a letter. Or it may include a fine.
Okay.
And that is all captured in ordinance eighty-four amendment two. It's one of the last sections of the ordinance. But it clearly outlines what those enforcement actions are.
A couple, it looks like if a couple of questions, a little conversation about carbon monoxide. On its requirements, so. The, the opening question is just can you clarify this? Carbon monoxide monitor requirements?
Yes, so there are requirements in ordinance eighty-four for carbon monoxide, monoxide detectors to be installed in bedrooms. And then outer areas outside of the bedrooms.
Okay. Um.
And I just want to again reiterate, please check your pattern. Please maintain them. I am very concerned about some of the things I have been seeing out in the field.
Okay, so, so they're required then, Sarah, the carbon monoxide detectors are required then?
Yes, they are.
Okay.
And there's.
Okay, is that within fifteen feet of a bedroom or?
So it's, it's, there is a requirement. Believe it's fifteen, it might be twenty feet.
Okay.
Um, and then also in the bedrooms, yes. And that is there, it is. Outlined in the bedroom definition. It is outlined also in the fire and life safety section where it talks about specifically where they are to go. And the language is an and, it is not an or.
Okay. Um. It looks like uh, a question here. Um, and you, I don't. I don't know you, that you've talked about this. You did a little bit maybe on the caps and the. And the distance um, requirements. What would constitute an S T R overload? On a community? I, I mean, that's the question.
Um, can you? Can you repeat that?
Yeah.
Mark, I don't know if I heard that right.
Yeah, what would constitute? An S T R. Overload. On a community?
So are we talking about numbers? Are we talking about capacity? Can someone clarify that for me, please? I, I'm not sure how they're defining overload.
Yeah, uh. I don't. Um, Mary Ellen McCullough. I don't, I don't know if you want to. Clarify that. I, it, that's what the question is. I don't know. What, you know, whether it's the number or the, I, I don't know.
So, so I think I can answer part of that question in part because that is a good lead in to, to a next step.
Okay.
So in establishing the caps. Um, what I've talked, thank you, Tom, what I've talked to the commissioners about. Is returning to each of the sub areas. So that includes the unincorporated communities. To reevaluate the percentage, the cap that's been established for each community. Um, Nescuin is one of the first communities on my list. So as soon as we get through. Thank you, Mr. McCullough. Once we get through. Um. Getting the application process reopen. Um, we're still, you know, working, we're answering a lot of questions. There's a lot of foot traffic in and out of here. Um, once I get to a point to where I feel like I can. Step away and start diving into that second phase. Your community and Nia Connie are the first, along with Tira Del Mar that I will be visiting with. So, Mark, I would love to do another C A C special meeting. Um, with that, I think that's where we talk about what overload means. Um, because my hope is then within this next year. Depending on what the consensus and the feedback is of the community. Would be to go back to the board with a recommendation on potentially adjusting that cap. No other parts of ordinance eighty-four amendment two will be touched. It will be solely based on the capacity conversation, but that is what we're going to focus on.
And tell us again the timeline for that, Sarah, approximately?
I'm hoping to let, to ask you if we can have a meeting in October, mid to late October. That's what I'm hoping for.
Okay. And do you have any sense of how long that process would, would, would be?
Well, I think it's going to vary by community.
Okay.
One thing that I think that has been really great about the community of Nescuin is you guys did such a fantastic job with that community survey. I have read that several times. And I think that that is a great platform to start the conversation of what you all would like to see that you feel. Is an appropriate cap for your community. So it may take us. I don't know, it may take us a little less time, it may take us a bit more time. You know, um, my goal would be to get it done. By the end of twenty twenty-four.
Okay.
I'm hoping though, you know, a couple of months, but it'll take as long as it needs to.
Oh, twenty twenty-four or twenty twenty-three?
Um, well, I would say everybody by the end of twenty twenty-four, but what I know about Nescuin is you are very thoughtful. You all are very um, intentional. There's a lot of thought and depth that goes into these conversations and a lot of research and outreach. So if it takes us a while, I'm okay with that.
Okay, got it. Uh. I guess just, uh, just one, uh, there's. A couple, just a couple of questions here, but. So just to be really clear, so even homes that have no C O or, or carbon monoxide source. Uh, we still have to buy, they still have to buy and install carbon monoxide detectors.
That is correct. And they do not need to be interconnected. There's a lot of carbon monoxide smoke detector combination. Units, um, they're standalone units, so they do not need to be interconnected, but you do have to have them.
Okay. Um. Let's see. I think. This last comment is probably. Or the N C A Cs. Um, okay. So Sarah, I think. You know, I. There's a comment here, but it's really for the N C A C and, and it's a good question, but I won't, I won't ask you the question because it's really, I think, for us.
Okay.
But um. Is that, is that the extent of what you wanted to talk about? I don't see any other questions. Is there?
Yeah, so, so, so just a couple of other things real quick. So one of the other. I, I think is a change that really resonates with the community livability and request for communication is the neighbor notification. So um. There was a requirement previously for S T R. Owners to send a notice to their neighbors. When they had applied for a license. Um, that was removed. Uh, in previous iterations and is now back. In the ordinance with an additional requirement that the department send out notice. To all property owners within a hundred feet of the rental property to let them know that a license has been issued. Or that there's been a change or an update to an existing license. There is, it is not a land use issue, so there's no appeal of a decision. There's no notice of application review for a new license. But what it is, is it's helping to. Bridge those communication gaps that we've heard about from community members of knowing. Who has the rental, who's responsible for the rental, et cetera. So you will be receiving notification from both the manager or the owner. Of a property who has applied. For a new license. And then you will receive that confirmation from the department when a license has been issued or there has been a change to an existing license. That warrants that, that updated notification to be sent to the neighbors. Um, couple of other things. There was a lot of time spent by the committee talking about transfers. What constitutes a transfer and a change in ownership? What does not? Um, I would strongly encourage anyone who's interested in that to read about that in the ordinance. Um, the, again, a lot of thought and attention went into trying to figure out how to ensure. That properties can continue to be passed down through familiar generations. Uh, without concern of losing a license. Uh, so that has been addressed through ordinance eighty-four amendment two. Um, also existing licenses have that one time transfer. New licenses issued will not have a transfer ability. And then also lastly, the ownership limitation. So um. Moving forward. Anyone who applies for a new license. Or is um. Picking up one of the transfers. Of a licensed property, it cannot have an ownership interest in any other licensed properties in unincorporated Tillman County. So there are landowners who do currently own multiple properties that all have licenses. Again, there is nothing that is saying you have to relinquish those licenses, but what that ownership limitation does. Is it does not allow. Those landowners who have, have multiple licensed properties to acquire anymore. So basically, it's, it's one per person. And that's even fractional ownership, so. And Mark, I think those are probably the high points. If there's some extra questions, I'd really. Love to answer any additional questions. I want to make sure I'm sharing information that people need.
Okay, there are two here. Uh, one question was about the transferability of S. Excuse me, of S T Rs, and I think you. I think you covered that one. Um. Do the fees for a management change start uh, as of now, or is that? January first of twenty twenty-four?
So the fees do apply now. So if an, if an alteration of an existing license is received. It requires. Changes that result in issuance of an updated certificate and license. Um. Then, then we are charging for that. Those costs were not covered. In the initial license application fees. Um, and those updates, by the time we update all of the records, reissue new licenses and certificates with that updated information. That can take staff quite a bit of time to do.
Okay. And maybe this, it's like it might be our last question here. Um. It said, uh, Sarah, not all residents are aware of what's been taking place, even with all the communication about the changes. Um, the question is, will letters be sent? Out to all residents to advise all. That is coming down the pike starting in January.
So um. The changes. Are not part of a land use review process, so there is no measure fifty-six notice. Um. What I will continue to do as I have done, Mark, is make sure that the C A Cs get copies of any letters and updates. Um, I will probably be sending you in the next week or two some sort of memo to share. That will direct people to the website. That, you know, so that everyone, maybe those who weren't able to join us tonight, have the opportunity to go there and see where those documents are. And definitely make sure the hotline. And some of those other pieces, um, as they relate to community livability are also highlighted in that memo. So all of the C A C chairs will get those for distribution.
Okay. Uh. To maybe just start to last question. How big does signage need to be, font size, et cetera? It's.
Oh, sure. So there is some flexibility in those signage. Requirements. Let me pull that up. Let's just read it. So the exterior signage, there's two pieces that are important. The first one is that road right of way is defined. And that's important when we talk about exterior signage visibility. So road right of way is defined as a public or private way. That is created to provide ingress or egress for persons to one or more properties. The terms street, access drive and highway for the purposes of this ordinance shall be synonymous. With the term road right of way. So I know especially in Nescuin, you have some roads that are actually easements. You have roads in the village that are platted roadways. So road right of way includes the boundaries. Of both. And then. So let me. Okay. So then I'm looking at page nineteen. For exterior mandatory posting, it says exterior signage. Shall be installed outside of the dwelling unit and shall be of adequate size. So that the following. so that the following required information on the exterior sign is easily read from the road right of way. So there's no specific font size, but you should be able to stand in the road right of way and read the sign. And that includes the license registration number on the sign, the county's, uh, complaint line and the property address. So that should all, that all has to be on the sign in a font that's visible from a person standing in the road right of way. Optional then on the sign could be the name of the contact person or entity, like a vacation rental management company and a telephone number. But with that, Mark, I really appreciate that question being asked because the other thing that we, um, have been struggling with is house numbers are not visible. And that's not just a short term rental license requirement. That's a fire and life safety issue. You know, you need, you might need to call an ambulance. And if, if you, if they can't see the house numbers on the house, not all emergencies have some sort of visible sign like smoke. So again, just encouraging people, please make sure your house numbers are visible.
Okay.
Thank you.
One more, uh, so buying, I, I think I know the answer to this one, but so buying a property with existing S T R license doesn't guarantee that the license can continue with that qualified home.
So is law, so there's one transfer that's allowed for existing licenses. The only scenario that would not allow that transfer to occur is not license based, it's ownership based. So if, Mark, if your home that had a license that was able to transfer, you put your home on the market, I want to buy it and Jeff wants to buy it. I already own a property that has a license and Jeff does not. Jeff could buy the property and assume the license. I cannot because I already own a licensed property. So it's not that it's, that's not a guarantee. It's just the, the transferability has to be with someone who does not have ownership interest in another licensed property in unincorporated Tillamook County. If you have ownership interest in a short term rental within the city limits of Rockaway Beach, I don't care. Right? It's got to be unincorporated Tillamook County. That is the limitation.
All right, last question for the evening and then we'll wrap up. Uh, how will property owners find out who don't know about the N C A C and I?
Oh, yeah, that's a good question.
That's a, I, I don't know if you have a comment about that one.
Sure. Well, I know, actually, I'd like to speak to this because I do get this every once in a while. So when, and, and it's, and, and so I will say the department as a whole, when customers come to the counter with land use inquiries, we always let them know that there is a C A C for the communities that have active C A Cs. We encourage them, depending on the type of review that may be required for what they want to do, we encourage them to reach out to the C A Cs. Mark, we give them, you know, access to your website, Oceanside, Pacific City, whoever the chair is, if they're comfortable with me sharing, uh, an email. Um, so we help, we want to support that awareness and that connection. So we in the office do that. Um, the other thing, when someone calls me with a question and they say, well, I didn't know about this, right? I say, you know what? You need to sign up for your C A C's newsletter. I send them the link to your website or talk to them about how to find it. So we in the department, we do what we can to in trying to be proactive when customers come to us to encourage them to get involved in their community C A C, if for nothing else, just to stay updated. Cause you guys do good work.
Okay. All right, Sarah, I think we're going to wrap that up. That's the last one and, uh, I, uh, I think everybody appreciates you being here this evening. So thank you very much for taking the time and very informative answered our questions and, uh, and thank you.
Sarah, if you have an extra couple of minutes, the officers have a, a couple non-S T R related questions for you.
I absolutely.
No, it's late, so, so.
Yeah, I'm sorry, we'd be real quick.
Yeah, sure. So the other thing, um, I wanted to say, I am blocking out time in my calendar every week to take short term rental inquiries. If you call our office, so it's five zero three eight four two three four zero eight. And you, um, talk to Deb Dixon, she's our customer care specialist. She has times blocked on my calendar for thirty minute calls when I am available to visit with folks about short term rental program updates. Please feel free to give her a call. She will tell you what times I have available next and she will schedule you in a time. Please make sure you leave your phone number, any other details, and I am happy to return that call to you during that scheduled time. I want to make sure, because we are getting so many inquiries, I want to make sure that I am setting aside time to help answer those. And anyone's welcome to call me and set up that time.
All right. Thank you very much, Sarah. I don't, I think, uh, I'll adjourn the meeting. Jeff advises how we just stick around then.
If we want to be strictly follow the rules, like we're not supposed to meet after we adjourn the meeting as officers, so, um, so, so, so let's wait and then, and everyone who doesn't care about the bylaws committee, um, that's what we're going to talk about. So you can go ahead and drop off. So, um, Mark, Mark, do you care if I, um, can a, ask questions?
Oh, go, go ahead. This is about the bylaws and the O, O P M L.
Right. So, so Sarah, we have a new bylaws committee that we installed, um, last weekend. And we have a really good group of people who are very excited about improving our bylaws. And so question number one, and, and I think we've got two of them here. And Susan Schomburg is also here, who hopefully will join the bylaws committee soon. Question number one is, um, amending the bylaws requires, um, an approval from the county council.
Yes.
And if we have a, if, if, if we have a bunch of bi amendments in the pipe because our bylaws committee is really fired up. Um, I, I guess we're looking for, for advice or help from you about how they can have, establish a good working relationship. Um, and, and Tom or Wyatt, if you want to jump in here, please do. With, with, uh, with William Sergeant, so, um, so that's question number one.
Okay. So, um, I did receive an email from Mark. Thank you, Mark, for that email. Uh, so a couple of things, the bylaws committee is a committee that is part of the C A C and is subject to Oregon Public Meeting Laws. Want to make sure that your committee is meeting and following those rules. With that, my recommendation would be to go ahead and, um, have the bylaw committee put together the recommendations for edits. I am happy to meet with the bylaw committee. So if you guys let me know in your meeting, love to attend. Um, and then once those, uh, proposed amendments are finalized, please send them to me. I will visit with, uh, county council about them. And then I will return those to you either with edits or not. Um, and then there would either be more discussion by the bylaws, uh, committee or they could be ready to go to the membership for a vote. But any questions you have, um, about language or framework as you are working through that process, please send them to me and I am happy to work with county council on this. So. Yeah.
And you already answered question number two, which is that there, yeah, we were hoping that would, there would be some sort of way that they could not be subject to O P M L.
Yeah, yeah.
So, uh, just to be clear, just to be clear, it would not be legal for the committee members to circulate a draft among themselves. It would have to be a public draft every iteration.
So, yes, so email circulation where you have quorum is subject to public meeting law, just like everybody else.
So if we, uh, sent that, those drafts to everybody, then we'd be okay. Is that correct?
As far as the entire membership?
Yes.
How, how about, so suppose we publish, like, you could, like, um, active documents or active revisions of the, uh, the bylaws are available on this page on, on the N C A C website, like, and, and, and announce that every time we announce the meeting, like, um, would, would that, would that be sufficient?
So I would always encourage you to post those drafts. I think I'm going to say this a different way, but I can hopefully it, it answers your question. The committee should not be engaging in dialogue outside of a, a public meeting.
Okay. So I, I, I want to make sure that we don't violate those, those laws. So is the pub, is the posting of a, uh, uh, draft based on a public meeting sufficient?
Yes, so you can post the draft with the announcement of the next meeting. You can post a draft, whoever has been working on the draft with those, uh, agreed to edits that were part of the previous meeting. Yes, you can post all of that. You know, there had been, especially the last couple of years, a lot of concerns about transparency and inclusivity. And I would just strongly encourage all of you to make sure that this good work is not, you know, compromised by concerns of community members for lack of transparency or inclusion to just have your meetings and do the work in the meetings. Where, you know, anyone can listen, um, you know, you can set time for public comment in your agenda, right? And so that's when public comments are received and then you can do your work. Um, but I would, I would, uh, strongly encourage you to make sure all of the dialogue happens out in the open in those meetings. Think that would just be best for everyone. Thank you, Tom. I appreciate your concern and, and wanting to make sure that that's clear. And again, happy to, to jump in and, and, you know, if you guys have any questions or you want me to just join, even just to listen, I don't have to talk. Sometimes I just like to listen to, so happy to be there.
We, we've been kind of wrangling with that for a week or, or two, so. Uh, appreciate, appreciate that. So thank you. Okay. I think that, that does it. I think that's the end of tonight. Thank you again.
You want to move to adjourn the meeting to do things?
I'll move, um, to do it formally. Okay. I move to adjourn the meeting.
A, a second.
Okay, and, uh, let's see, is everybody all in favor? I guess, uh, I'm in.
Like, yeah, put up, raise your hands or put up your hands.
I think, I think we've got enough. All right, it's adjourned at eight twenty seven. Thanks again, Sarah.
Thank you all very much. Great to see you. Have a good night.
All right.
Bye.